Call regular meeting of June 9, 2022 to order.
Councilmember Andrejic.
President.
Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor King.
Here.
And Mayor Sierra.
She there?
No, she, no, Mayor Sierra is absent this evening.
Okay. All right, Scott, any reordering of the agenda?
We have no reordering of the agenda this evening.
You want to make that announcement now, Scott?
Oh, no, we'll do it before the, at the item.
Okay, so I do have public comments. And we'll get started with those.
This will just be right now, just public comments on items, not on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, any public comments on anything not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to consent counter. This would be the minutes of May 26, 2022, regular city council meeting, list of plans to be approved or ratified or payment to the date fiscal year 2122. Resolution 2221, a resolution of the C Council, the City of Bulton, California acknowledging receipt of and reorder, an ordering on the filing of the annual statement investment policy for fiscal year 2223 with the city council, biennial review of conflict of interest code, resolution 2222, resolution of the city council, the City of Bulton, California, the purpose of mid-cycle budget amendments related to fiscal year 2223, and resolution 2223, a resolution of the city council, City of Bulton, California proclaiming the continuing need to meet by teleconference. Bring it back to the council, we've had a motion in a second, Linda.
Hey, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrejic.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Vice Mayor King.
Hi. Any presentations?
No, sir.
All right, I'll move on to public hearings, resolution number 2214, a resolution of the city council of the City of Bulton, California regarding the commitments and publishing of the report required by Central Coast Water Authority Resolution 92-02 and 92-11. So this would be Rose Hess.
Thank you, members of city council. So this is an annual household item for us, housekeeping item for the city council to review. It's a public hearing required as per our contract with the Central Coast Water Authority. As being one of the member agencies, we're supposed to go through and make sure that we have a water supply report provided annually. The water supply report is provided as one of the exhibits or as the exhibit for resolution number 22-14, provides background on the city's water supply system, identifies our current water supply and status, our groundwater efforts and our conservation efforts. Excuse me. With that, we have this, report has been posted on the city's website as well for any public review or comment. And upon approval of city council, we submit this report to CCWA. And this is, of course, to provide that we have water for the city and ourselves, and then we are using our state water for to supplement our needs at this point in time. That I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? I will go to the public for any comments.
No comments.
All right, and I'll return to the council for possible action.
A second.
Okay, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrejic.
Hi.
Hi. All right, any council member comments or items for possible future agenda items?
I had a, I had a comment, I was, I just wanted to saw that our staff was on Highway 246 cleaning up the weeds and the at the crossroad at La Lotta, and it seemed to me it was a cow trans, I don't know if that's part of our deal, but there was a weeds there, and I wanted to thank staff for taking care of that, and they've got to take care of.
Okay, any other comments or items? All right, having none, moving on to written communications, Linda.
None.
And committee reports, anyone on the council been to a committee meeting recently?
I did a CCWA meeting. And it was about the contract with the lake and putting water in the lake. And anyways, it's all taken care of today, but we're still vigilant about our water use and keeping track of everyone. And the other committee report would be from the pool, what would you like to tell them what happened at the aquatics?
Yes, I also did attend that meeting, there was some discussion about changing the configuration, possibly moving the pool to a different location so that we can expedite getting the pool in. For those of you who have not heard, the Olympic sized pool that we bought several years ago has been waiting for a home, and we're trying to get a location on the school grounds where we can have an Olympic sized pool. The pool we have now, for those of you who don't know, cannot be used for CIF games or any league games because it has a shallow end. So the pool we're attempting to put in there, the athletes at the school can now have CIF tournaments, we can also have tournaments from outside agencies come there because it's deep on both ends, and it will meet the regulations that our students will be able to have either CIF games or league games in that pool. Once again, for those of you who don't know, they cannot have any league games, so we always have to go to another school to play any league games or any CIF games, so what we're trying to do here in the valley is put a pool in so our kids don't have to travel for their own league game, so that's what John and I have been working on for a long time. Anyone else? No? Okay, so moving on to business items. Good? This is a conceptual review of Campus 36, mixed-use project, APN 009-690-048, Southern Terminus of Industrial Way, and this will be Irma Tucker.
Irma, you are muted.
I see that, thank you, thank you Vice Mayor King and city council members. I want to make sure that you can see my screen, which I have shared, and it should have a big white screen saying Campus 36, Mixed Use Project, so. Yes?
Yes.
All right, good. So this is the item that we have before council tonight, it's a conceptual review of this project. This is not working. There we go. And the application was submitted by St. George, I was the property owner and also Lonnie Roy and Gavin Moores as the applicants together working on this project as a team. It is the 17 acre parcel that is located at the Southern Terminus of Industrial Way. There are existing entitlements on this property known as the Bulton Hub Mixed Use Project. It was approved several years ago for a total building space of 135,000 square feet, consisting of industrial business support uses as well as 54 residential units. These existing entitlements would be terminated if the new entitlements are approved. So this is a vicinity map showing the location of the properties and 17 acres, Southern Terminus of Industrial Way. This is, to the west is the former Terravon, currently Summerlin Wines, Fig Mountain Brew, and to the east is the De Maria neighborhood. Land use and zoning on the property, zoning is industrial and open space. It's consistent with the general plan, which is industrial and manufacturing on portion of the property as well as open, open space parks and recreation on the balance of the property. The site is located in 100-year flood boundary as it, just immediately to the south of the of the property is the San Yenas River, and immediately to the west of it is Zaca Creek. The proposed mixed-use development consists of a total building space of 210,000 square feet, consisting of industrial and business support uses of approximately 71,000 square feet, and residential uses of approximately 138,000 square feet. 116 units are proposed, consisting of condominiums, micro studio apartments, employee housing, and work-life units. There's one primary access point to the project, and this is along an existing easement that adjoins to Industrial Way. And there would need to be a new bridge constructed across Zaca Creek in order to access the 17 acre site. There is an additional access point, there's an easement through the Rancho De Maria subdivision to the east at Shadow Mountain Drive, and this access point is for emergency access only. So I've included here a snapshot of the conceptual site plan. I'm not going to go into detail on the various components of the development as the project applicant is here tonight, and we'll have a more in-depth presentation on this. But this kind of gives a snapshot, you're looking at, to the right would be the San Yenas River, the existing open space area, as you go further left, we have some groundwater, stormwater basins, and then the mixed-use development on the balance of the site. So for comparison's sake, this table shows the existing entitlement on the left, which is the hub project, compared to the Campus 36 project, which is the proposed project. So previously, the, and under the existing entitlements, the industrial and business support uses consisted of close to 76,000 square feet, representing 56% of the total building square footage, consistent with mixed-use development, represented more than 50% of the underlying industrial zone, and residential component of it. And residential component of it was for fifty-four dwelling units, which represented forty-four percent of the. Project space for a total building square footage of a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet. The Campus Thirty-Six Project is proposing just slightly less manufacturing and business support uses. Seventy-one thousand, close to seventy-two thousand square feet. But the difference between the prior entitlement and the proposed entitlement is the number of dwelling units that is being proposed. There's a hundred and sixteen dwelling units being proposed. So that makes the residential component of this proposed project sixty-six percent of the total building square footage. Which is two hundred and ten thousand square feet. The Planning Commission conducted a conceptual review of the project on April seventh. And it's a quick summary of the comments that they had. They would like to see an increase in the percentage of the manufacturing component. They wanted to make sure that easements for a future river trail were being considered. Would like to make sure that the required percentage of affordable units are provided for onsite. And they asked the applicant to elaborate on the program that they have for onsite management. And some of the concerns they had in terms of impacts mainly surrounded. Were surrounding traffic, circulation, and parking. As part of the Planning Commission Concept Review, we received comments from residents of the neighboring. Rancho De Maria area. The concerns expressed included the density and intensity increase over the previously approved hub project. The viability of the proposed uses, increased traffic noise, odor and light pollution. Access via the Rancho De Maria property to and from the site. And construction equipment potentially using the emergency access point at Shadow Mountain Drive. Subsequent to the Planning Commission Concept Review Meeting, the applicant conducted a community meeting on May twelfth. With residents of Rancho De Maria. And the applicant's notes from that meeting were included in your agenda packet as attachment six. Also subsequent to the Planning Commission Concept Review Meeting, staff met with the applicant to discuss comments, concerns. And strategies moving forward. The areas of concern, I listed them here. They are in the staff report as well. But the first set of items were mainly items that were inconsistent with the underlying zone. And the mixed-use ordinance. And there were some inconsistencies with complying, with how the live-work units complied with the California Building Code. There are concerns over the residential open space standards. Clients with the affordable housing ordinance, and of course, the project impacts regarding traffic, circulation, parking, air quality, greenhouse gas. And so on, and as well as comments being considered from the Rancho De Maria residents. At that meeting, we discussed some potential solutions and strategies to accommodate this new innovative project vision. So there were a couple of ways that the applicant could proceed. One would be to do project modifications to achieve consistency with the municipal code. Another option would be potential municipal code modifications to accommodate the project. We discussed permits and discretionary actions that may lend itself to go down one of these paths. And one of the items that we, both the staff and the project team talked about was the preparation of a specific plan. It was felt to be that would be a viable potential solution to addressing a, an entitlement path forward. So the applicant has revised the project plans to comply with the CBC requirements for live-work units. They've made minor changes to the percentage of industrial versus residential land uses. And most importantly, they are intending to submit an application for preparation of a specific plan. So the specific plan would provide a regulatory mechanism to address the unique needs of this innovative concept for mixed-use development. And the specific plan would also allow for the establishment of tailor-made land use and zoning standards specifically for this project. And it's a way to address the area, the areas of concern and inconsistency with the existing code standards. So this is the path that the applicant would be going down. Then the potential new entitlements being sought would consist of a specific plan, which would include potential zoning code changes. Would need to be a final development submitted and reviewed as part of this. There may also need to be a new tentative track map processed. However, one was processed for the previously approved hub project. And if this track map suffices, they may not need to redo that. Condominium mapping would be done after the entitlements are approved during the building permit process. Environmental review and documentation would need to take place concerning the specific plan. And there would be an initial study prepared that would determine the types of technical studies to be prepared. And we are likely looking at traffic and parking studies, air quality, greenhouse gas, noise, archaeology, bioresources. The actual secret report to be prepared would be determined based upon the impacts that are identified via these technical studies. We haven't not really talked about other types of permits in depth as this is just a conceptual review at this point. But there could conceivably be a development agreement considered and other permits that would be needed. As part of the specific plan process. There were a couple of comments received from the public, written comments that were received ahead of the city council meeting tonight. Those were forwarded to city council. And it just mentioned that the two individuals who submitted comments were Carol Burger from Rancho De Maria. Who's opposed to the project, as well as Joe Manser from Rancho De Maria as well. And he listed a number of concerns that he wished to the council to consider about the project. So the recommendation tonight is that the city council review the conceptual project plans. Receive a presentation by the applicant and provide comments to the applicant on the project. The staff's suggestion this evening is that the council consider the following topics, along with any other applicable issues. When providing comments to the applicant. And these types of comments would be really, really helpful in charting the path forward. And guiding the preparation of the permits and entitlements for the project. So the following, the topics that for the council to consider would be the appropriateness of the project for the surrounding area. And the built community, the compatibility of proposed land uses with existing and planned uses in the immediate industrial neighborhood. As well as to comment on specific aspects of the proposed project, such as site design, architectural style. The mixed density and intensity of land uses, traffic, circulation, and parking impacts. Both onsite and offsite on the adjacent Industrial Way neighborhood, as well as Rancho De Maria. Project signage, both onsite and offsite. And also the interface between the developed portion of the site and the undeveloped open space areas of the project site. Which the open space area actually abuts the San Ynez River and Zaca Creek. And also finally, to consider the emergency access via roadways in the Rancho De Maria development. And other related neighborhood impacts on that area. So that includes my brief introductory comments. The sequence tonight of how this is, will move forward is, you know, we have additional staff comments onboard. The applicant is available to make a presentation as well. I'm aware that we have a number of members of the audience that may like to speak tonight. And then of course, city council and comments. And with that, I will turn it over to City Manager Scott Wolf. To, for some additional comments on how we move forward tonight.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, as Irma indicated here. The, the process that I'm going to suggest tonight is a little different than what we typically do for items coming before the city council. The primary reason for the difference tonight is that unlike most items that come before the city council, there's no decision to be made this evening. There's no vote to be taken. This is simply an information gathering. Exercise for both the city council, the public, and the applicant. Everyone's looking for information. Everyone's looking for answers. So this is kind of a community conversation to be had. Because of that, rather than going through the typical back and forth in order to kind of save time and keep everyone focused in the right direction. I'm going to suggest that we hold off on city council questions regarding the presentation by staff. Allow the applicant to give the applicant's presentation, because the bulk of the information coming to the council tonight is going to be presented by the applicant. This is their first opportunity to present this to the council. Following the applicant's presentation. I would suggest that we allow the public to go through the, their comment process. That way, the city council gets an opportunity to hear not only the applicant's presentation, but the concerns that the public presents. And then following that, then the city council would have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, ask questions of staff. And, and make their own comments. Because there's no vote tonight, because it's not a public hearing, the city attorney and I have discussed this. And it's, it's recommended that this evening, the city council allow two minutes for each speaker. There are a considerable number of speakers tonight, and again, since there's no, no vote to be taken tonight. What we're really looking for from the public is a focus on specific concerns that they have regarding the, the project. We know there are some strong feelings regarding this project, but it, it, it will benefit no one to, to request the city council. Deny this project at this point, because we don't even have an application at this point. This is simply a concept review. So rather than, than focus on what the end result of this process might be. We prefer that everyone focus on what the concerns that they specifically have regarding the project are. Let's see, what did I miss here? Lastly, what we're looking for from the city council, and I'll reiterate this again before the council discusses things is. The most important thing for the applicant and for staff tonight is to get some, some very frank comments from the city council. Tonight is not the night to be polite necessarily, and we don't, we don't, we don't need brutal, but be honest with the applicant. Tell them what your concerns are, if you have them. Tell them what you like about the project, if there are things that you like about it. We do want you to stop short, however, of indicating any preference you might have for how you might vote on this project. It's not up for a public hearing. We don't have an application. There's been, this is not a noticed hearing. So we, we don't want to prejudice, the council members to prejudice themselves in any way with regard to this project. So with that, unless you have any questions of me right now, I will return this to Vice Mayor King. And the applicant's presentation would be next, unless the city attorney would like to add anything. Thank you.
Okay, having that in mind, I will bring up the applicant Gavin Moore to the microphone to give his presentation.
Vice Chair King, Gavin Moore's, I think I'm going to hand this over here for the first part of the presentation to Julie McGeeva. And then I will address a second part, portion of the presentation. Thank you.
Vice Mayor King and members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to present before you. I'll reiterate, City Manager Wolf's feedback that we are gathering information. We really want to get this project right. I know it is different than what had been previously approved, and that's intentional. And I'm hoping as we walk through our presentation, I can give you some guidance as to our thought processes, how we got to that. But this is going to be a local project for local people, so we do want honest feedback. While he's doing that, I can give you a little bit of feedback on the history. Ed St. George moved up to the valley. He has quite a breadth of experience as a developer, multifamily. Communities where there is a fair amount of amenities, and he has a very vibrant management platform that manages his facilities. And I know that's one of the questions that's going to be raised. And I encourage anybody that has a little further interest in how he really runs his shops to visit his sites in, in Santa Barbara. They're exquisitely clean. They're very well maintained, and there's usually has a waitlist for them. When he first looked at this project, it was purely industrial with the multifamily on the upper end of the project. That has value. Okay, that's right. Here's, here's a project site he moved forward. And In the fact that he was very invested in this community, he started, and this is what Ed does, he starts talking to everybody. He talked to elected officials, he talked to business owners, he talked to people that were just entering marketplace. Because a lot of his business has been housing young people, because he has a young family. And he's very passionate in his philanthropic efforts for advancing younger people through the professional world. One of the ideas he wanted to explore further was, gee, what if we re-envision this campus? So that it could be truly an R and D campus. And right now, we're experiences in this in Santa Barbara. I'm sure it's somewhat the same here. I experienced it myself. When my son graduated, he had to move out of town. There wasn't opportunities for a live-work balance. That was as satisfactory as he might have hoped for. And that's something that's really been on the top of Ed's mind. He feels that we have a fair amount of brain drain. And we have all these amazing resources. Why are we not committing back to the young business owners? Or not even the young business owners, those business owners or entrepreneurs who are on the back end of their career. Maybe stepping into a new career, which we've seen a lot of that during COVID. And so in reinventing his vision for this campus, he started asking a lot of questions. If you had a space where you could start your business, and you were new to the business, maybe you didn't have a lot of infrastructure. Or capital, what would you look for sure? And one of the things he heard was, well, do you have an ability to have communal facilities? Where we can meet and collaborate with other people, other technical skilled people that are onsite? Two, is there any type of shared amenities where we could have a 3D printer? Or some of the larger cost items that as an, as an early business developer would be beyond their ability to afford? Third, and this was a very prominent statement by many people, where are my people going to live? I, I'm starting my business. I need a place to live. If I hire other people, they're going to be coming from Orchid, Lompoc, Santa Maria, places where they can afford to live. What if you were to consider something where I have the potential of having a living accommodation onsite? Not luxurious, but a place where I could really create a startup. Now, and those people living there are going to want a certain quality of life too, so would you have basic amenities in place for them? So he tool that for a long time, and we have gone through many iterations of discussion on this project. But this kind of speaks to the vision of it. He wanted to investigate developing a campus that would be somewhat comprehensive in the fact that it would have true live. And true work onsite, and would really become a vested part of the community and be self-sustaining. And as these young developers or older developers starting their businesses, grew their business, they'd have a chance to branch out. And then move into more established environments, but it would continue to celebrate. You know, the educated opportunities that we have here that just isn't a lot of incubator opportunities for. So next slide. So this is just some other visioning that he had, and I'll move quickly because I know we have a lot of people to speak. So these are some of the images of what the lifestyle might be onsite. One of the things that we heard very clearly from Rancho De Maria would mean that with them. And I understand their concerns because they have an immaculately maintained property. And they have beautiful common amenities, and they're very proud of them. And they spend a fair amount of money and oversight of the H way to maintain those. They want to make sure there is no interface between our property and theirs, and I get that. So investigating what we would do onsite, we wanted to have. So investigating what we would do on site, we wanted to have amenities. And if you look at the site plan, which we'll see a little bit later. They're 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 quite broad. We have a lot of outdoor areas. We're going to have a fitness area. There'll be areas that can be intergenerational. It's not really intended to be a place where you would have kids, but that will happen. Someone will have a baby and you can't prohibit that. But there would be amenities on site so that it could be absolutely inclusive. So here's an overview of the site. Over the northern end of the site, we have the condominiums. And that is largely the same footprint that had been experienced before. We have re-articulated the buildings and now there are 48 units there. Each one has a covered parking space. And there's an uncovered parking space, and I'll talk a little bit more about parking later. We have a very significant outdoor area at at the core that Ed is big into pets. And believes that their quality of life should be equal. So we have a pet park and other amenities that are really set up for a family with pets. In the middle, you'll see building B, that's the beauty room. That's one story. It is a combination lecture hall, fitness room. Meeting space, kind of like a collab, a co-work space. And there's there is a kitchen there so that, you know, simple meals can be provided. We will also have a full time concierge on site. So that I know is another concern about management of the site. Ed is intentionally creating HOAs for each sector of the project so that we we can manage it. And we can regulate and make sure that the intent of this project is carried through. And just for the the needs of the people that will be living here, the concierge will be able to assist them in. Scheduling use of a 3D printer, you know, having a mechanical system evaluated that's not working, things of that nature. So I can guarantee that that will be part of the plan. Next. Okay, so this speaks to the development envelope. This is a 17 acre site. Previously, there had been a little over four acres that have been preserved as open space. We have respected and we may and and maintained all those same margins. The only thing we have changed is the previous plan had a number of pathways that went through the wildland interface. And as we evaluated that, and as we have had our biologists reevaluate the site, and it's largely static, so it's it's. We'll have reports following shortly, but UDEC has largely determined kind of where we were at in 2017. If you if you provide a number of pathways into this sensitive area, you're going to potentially destroy. Natural habitat. Right now, there is a fair amount of pathways and they're pretty well maintained. Our intent would be to clean them up, remove any detritus from the area, but largely leave it as it is because it's a very precious resource. And there's very few arid areas like this that exist and will continue to exist. And the view and just the aesthetics and having access to to that area and, you know, on top of the fact that it's. You know, capable of helping us with some of our carbon offset is important to Ed. So we've maintained that. Excellent. Not to speak to that again. So this area down at the bottom of the site is the San Diego Creek area. It's right now pretty degraded. It is what was called an Arizona concrete crossing. That must have been used for a surface crossing at some point. And there's a fair amount of non-native species in that area. So part of the originally approved plan and part of this plan is to restore all of that area. We have just finished an application. And we're on the cusp of submitting it to state agencies, regional water quality control board, as well as. As 401, 404 permitting, and they're all going to evaluate our plan. The bridge that is proposed to access the site is in the exact same position. Of our location as what had been previously proposed for the project, so we haven't had to make any changes there. And then, yes, we will re-vegetate all of that area as part of the scope of this work. Next. Okay, so here's a breakdown of some statistics. The research and development. Itself, what we've done, you'll see in later slides of some of the floor plans, we've broken them down into suites. And there's a variety in sizes, everywhere from 150 to 3,000 square feet based on the user interface. That is about 18,400 square feet. One of the other statements that we received from almost every tech developer we talked to is we need a place to store our stuff. It's got to be conditioned and it's got to be protected. So we have 19,000 square feet of what would be, you know, officially defined as. As industrial space, but it's really passive space. It's on the second floor. It is conditioned. And it's used for, it's meant for the storage of all of the equipment and the after production. Finished product to be stored up in those areas. And that's up on the second floor. You'll see that building. We have the community business center that I already spoke to. And then we have something that's pretty novel. We have 18 live work units. And, you know, as as Irma had spoken, we went back and forth in discussing what that needs to look like. We both decided that we would default to the county of Santa Barbara and the building code interpretation of. How the work environment unit should work. So we we had extensive dialogue with them. They're very helpful. And they said, you know, it should be half and half and and really to make this work, 3,000 square feet each is a good measure. Now, when we design these, they'll have a bathroom and they'll have a kitchenette. The build out of the remainder of the space will be up to the tenant and user, and then we'll have to have that approved as a TI. They're not going to be able to extend beyond half that space as as residential, but they may choose to use it as office space. So while we give the flexibility of that being a true live work, we don't know in the user interface. How they might use that, but it gives them that absolute flexibility. So that's great. So this is this next part is important because I know comparing about 118 units, it sounds like a lot. And Ed's intent was, I want to have a number of really nice efficiency apartments. You'll see them often, they're very common in Europe, especially wherever land is here. You're seeing it more and more in the urban centers. And they're they're generally about 400 and 450 square feet. They're studio apartments. They have a really nice bathroom. A kitchenette and then a big common open space with a full down Murphy bed. So those are the micro studio apartments. The 14 one bedrooms are just slightly larger, but they are the same design. And these are specifically intended for the users of the R and D tenants on site. They will have first right of refusal in choosing those. And because we're only talking about 50 units. And I should also qualify the general plan or the current general plan for the. City of Yuletin states that you have a housing job imbalance of 1.2. So you have more jobs than you have housing available. And that's very common in all coastal cities. What was interesting was, and this is part of why we have it structured such as it is, is one of the key elements that was identified that is missing is studios and one bedrooms. And then four and five bedroom units. There's plenty two and three relative to the overall inventory. So a lot of people are starting out. First move out, they can't live here unless they move they move in with roommates. So that's why you have been seeing so much commuter traffic coming into town to work, especially with entry level. Positions, and that was completely that intention that these were not going to be luxury units. These are not intended to be big money makers. This site was never intended to be a multifamily site. It was to foster the development of technology and really create something that could be a vibrant part of the of the community. We do continue to have the multifamily. Those are 48 two-bedroom condominiums. Those will have their own HOA. We will not be surprised if there isn't quite a bit of alignment from the people that have those units and the people that work within the R and D space. But those we are true to truly treating as multifamily because they are. Another really important part of piece to point out was we asked, we were asked many, many questions about parking, completely valid. So we took a very conservative look at this. As I said earlier, our condominiums have two parking spaces. They have one covered, one. One uncovered. What's really interesting, the live work units is 3,000 square foot units. They have five parking spaces for each one of them. So they're they're very amputated parked. And we also did not ask for any type of shared parking accommodation. So we strictly park the multifamily per the city code and strictly park the commercial. We do believe that will be some shared parking by virtue of our explanation when we get it to a little bit of the elements of the traffic study that we've identified thus far. But again, we know that's a concern. So we've put it out there right there. And so 296 are required by code. We're providing 300. Next. Okay, circulation of traffic. Okay, so this slide was developed before we got a little feedback today, which was good feedback. We've had a chance to talk to a number of planners as well as city planners, as well as traffic engineers, one of which is the city's subcontracted. Transportation advisor. And while they could not give us specific feedbacks, that would be a conflict of interest. I said, conceptually, when you see these live work environments, what do you think? And when I when I spoke to him, he said, you know, I wish we saw more of them. This is the what? This is the wave of the future. We have to cut down greenhouse gas. We have to start cutting down vehicle miles traveled. We have to find another way like they did in Europe where you live and work largely in the same space. So this, you know, you can read through this. This is was our assertion initially that we felt very strongly that. If we could provide live work on site, we're going to have less vehicle miles traveled, less peak hour trips. And we we do plan on having a very vibrant electrical bike program. I know that for a long time that was considered experimental. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to use some of those. Santa Barbara, they're really vibrant. There's people using them all the time. You can get a month pass. And go just about anywhere in town and and it's power assist. So. They end up being really functional. What we're finding is with a lot of the younger folks is their preference. And we also will will have a car share program initially, probably have a couple cars, but we could ratchet that up based on whatever the need would be. So the more recent information I I received was from Stan Tech. Which was a traffic engineer who just recently engaged to start a broad brush traffic study. We're in the early stages, but I asked him in anticipation of this meeting and in anticipation of what we had heard from Rancho de Maria is. What, based on the original project, the pre-approved project, what is their peak hour trips? And both in the AM and PM, and based on this mix, what would you say our peak hour trips would be? So Stan Tech did the original. And they said the previously approved project would have had 105 AM trips and 108 PM trips. And. A lot of that is relational again to commuter traffic coming from areas where they. Is a little more affordable to live. The new project, without any type of what's called internal capture credit, which means shared accommodations where you get a little more flexibility because. They're living and working on site. And he said, just based on your project description, and this is important, and Irma has a copy of this. We would have 76 AM trips and 88 PM trips. So this wears with the feedback we've received from all of the traffic engineers we've talked to. That's really sizable. And that speaks a lot to, I think, the intent of all of our coastal communities to have less traffic. You know, more focused on greenhouse gas emissions and really looking at sustainability, excuse me, sustainability issues. When he applied the internal capture rate, which is very typical in an urban area, it brings it down even lower down. It was 64 AM trips and 75 PM trips. But again, I want to be completely transparent and give you a very conservative read so you can see what that looks like. So that information is going to continue being studied. They're going to do, you know, all the level of service evaluation. So we'll have a much broader base robust study as part of our application for everyone to review, but I knew that was super important. So I wanted to get that out there right away. So this is a condo building over on building A. You can see they're they're pretty basic. We have bridges on the first floor. They're they're all flats. We have two and three stories. It's important to note, I know there's very much concern about some of our three-story elements. Those are all designed in the interior of the building so that it would be adjacent to additional industrial. All of the units that are facing out toward Rancho de Maria and their view sheds are two-story. Next. This is just giving just a initial concept elevation. We are trying to. Respond to the vernacular that is in in the building code or excuse me, the city municipal code as well as what we see here, but this is very early days. We want feedback on this. Again, we want it to look and feel like Yuletin. And this is just some elements of materials that we would use. One thing I should point out, Ed is all about sustainability. Like he kind of nerds out on it. So he is developing his own company to have PV panels. He would like to have this all be part of a smaller grid potentially. He is very focused on using reclaimed water wherever wherever possible. I know that we don't yet have that here. But there's a potential for gray water systems on site. Again, you've already heard his thoughts on on traffic and all of the materials he wants to source out. He wants them to have high recyclable content. He wants them to be have a long term durability. He's got young kids and he knows he has to be the responsible one. And he, again, it really enjoys getting it right. Next.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
Go back on like gray water. What was the issue with that?
Oh, as I understand it, there isn't reclaimed water to the site yet, correct? So and there there's some pretty significant health and safety codes as it relates to the use of groundwater. We would certainly use it for irrigation, but he wants to push the envelope, and I think we're all going to be facing that because we now know drought is our forever. And I think as regulations and protocols and technology advance, he wants to give advantage of all of it. Next. So here's the three-story building, full disclosure. You can see where those lay out on the site. Next. Okay, so this is a community building that I talked about. It's got an activity presentation slash more likely a co-work space. It will have a fitness room. I'm big into that. A common lounge and just some basic services. Again, it's not. It's not grandiose. It's not meant to be a big gigantic lecture hall, but a place where people can aggregate. And there's also some outdoor patio areas and. Areas where they can aggregate in the center. Next. So this is just a concept elevation. Again, still to be worked. Next. This this this, these are some visioning. Photos of what could occur within the interiors. This is quite common. The co-work spaces I found have been incredibly, incredibly popular. Especially when you have collaborative young designers or young business designers. Okay, so here we have building C. This spaces, this is as close to Rancho de Maria as the rest of the site. And you can see in looking at its two stories, you'll see the R and D spaces. Right now, we have them as a mix of different sizes as we work with staff and we understand this market more. How they're oriented, their sizing might change. Again, we we want them to be for local users, but Ed's initial thought was. There's going to be people that need small spaces. There's going to be people that need medium spaces. Some will need large. And there will be some that want a large space and they'll need an office to operate out of. Additionally, you'll see that we have a community lobby over here and there's some amenities. There's a laundry room and what have you. We do have two units on the bottom that are are these. Micro units, because those would be accessible. And then directly up the stairs, I know there was a big concern about connectivity between our multifamily and our R and D. And that intent that potentially that those could be rented out to anybody and you would have a disparate un-unconnected population there. Again, not not the intent and the fact that we have stairwells right from the hallway or right down into the R and D space. They're very functional. They all have great windows. The private space in them is nice, but they're they're by no means luxurious. Next. And this is just again, a conceptual review of what that might look like. Here's a view of the inside of these macro units. And Ed had probably mentioned it, you might have heard in our last PC concept hearing. He's actually built one of these. He's got a site in in solving this old lumberyard and he built one of them. And he invited people to take a walkthrough. And what's amazing is how sizable and usable they are when he walks through them. They're quite functional. So that might be part of a further dialogue is to actually go out there and see what those look like. Next. Okay, so this is a mixed juice building D. So down at the bottom, this is closer to industrial way. Here's a live work studios we talked about. They are really meant to be as functional for their attendant use as possible. They have each have a roll-up door. They all have pedestrian access. We will have a bathroom and, as I said, a simple kitchenette in them. But other than that, they will be left to the user to break out the space. And again, they will have to take it. And again, they will have to take it through a tenant improvement permit so that there will be some checks and balances at a county and city level that their intended use is as expected. And then up above on the second floor, we have purely conditioned storage. That's just for leisure goods purposes right now. We don't, we don't plan to have a bunch of spaces. It's going to be based on the user and the spacing of those rooms can be flexible. And this is just the origin. Okay, so this building is facing out into Saniness River View. Originally, the previously approved project had been, there'd been some flex space and office space, and it was a mixture of different things. And again, Ed wanted to make sure that these live work units were a focus of the site. And so you can really not only have a true user space, but I mean, how amazing would it be to have your live workspace and then have a view out beyond down to the Saniness River? It's a once in a lifetime thing. And it's a really, really special opportunity. And then on top of that, he has again, these are qualified as employee housing, which is allowed per the use in the code for industrial, however you might define them. There again, they're one bedroom units, but they're again, very very modest in size. And they're meant to be efficiency units. The stairwell goes right down into the live work spaces. Next. This is again, a preliminary elevation. We haven't gone too far with this because we want the city and stakeholders to be part of the solution. Next. And these are just, you know, how some of these live work spaces might work. Next. And okay, so recreation amenities and not to be to dead horse, but I know there's a great concern that if a project like this comes on board, that we have enough services and amenities to serve the people on site and are not going to be vampires using spaces that belong to other people. And that is absolutely Ed's intent. So you can see it's quite robust in a variety of different spaces. Next. And this is just a vision of what those spaces would look like. Next. Plant material. We didn't really go too deep with the landscaping plant. We do have a landscape architect on our team, which is awesome. And what I can commit to guarantee is that all of our species are not just going to be drought tolerant. We want them to be native to the area. So we want it to be a continuation of a cultivated variety of what you already see in the wildland interface there. We think that's important. You never know where you're going to have nesting animals at times in the future. And it's just, it's the right thing to do. It continues on, it respects the space, makes it multi-use, but it allows you to continue to celebrate this floor. Next. So this is just a site area, kind of gives you an overview of the site itself. You can see the drive aisles are intentionally very wide. They're 26 foot wide drive aisles. Want to make it really easy for trash to come through and more importantly, emergency response. We've run this concept by the fire department and they liked what they saw in that. One of the things that is important to note is in looking at the zonings onsite, onsite as well as around the peripheral, Ed was kind of scratching his head a little bit. He's like, you know, on one side, you've got pure industrial use. And on the other side, you've got an HOA and it's a very vibrant family neighborhood. Put another big industrial building here, a series of buildings, which is what was previously proved, kind of seems to be a little counterintuitive. I mean, so what if we came up with something that really truly was transitional in use? And this was his answer for that. So it still respects the intent of the use, but also because of the users being on site, being smaller spaces, it's not going to be a 40,000 square foot user. You're not going to see the big double 18-wheel trucks and the, you know, some of the larger equipments every time they back up and or some of their late night operations. It's intended to be a much more serene environment. One of the things I will point out, and we did talk to Rancho de Maria about, is the planting all along the perimeter. We plan on working with them to get that right. And we're okay with planting both on our side and on their side. And that we would bear the cost of install plus the irrigation. Next. And these are just very rough, rough, rough perspectives. We're going to put a lot more time into this and get into a lot more of the visioning and viewpoint or studies. We know that is a great concern through everybody. But just to give you a flavor of what this environment would look like if you went through. Next. So you'll see these would be the live work spaces. Next. Just another one of the streetscape. Next. And again, just kind of giving you a sense of the building relative to the pedestrian experience. Next. Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Gavin. I should also point out Gavin was a previous developer on this project and he spent a boatload of time working with community stakeholders as well as Rancho de Maria. And when Ed took on this project and he heard about Gavin, he immediately brought him into our group. He said, you can help us do this right. And he's been great. So I recently went with him to the Rancho de Maria meeting and I will let him carry on from here.
Hey, Ma King, fellow council members. I'm a simple guy, so I'll just get down to some nitty gritty points here because I think some of this is important. Also, I know that there's probably most of the audience here is from Rancho de Maria. And in our meetings, I wasn't able to explain and answer some of the points. And one of the main points was relating to traffic. And I just want to high level talk about the traffic. The traffic uses of this are not quite, but they're almost half of what the original project is. Not quite, but we're going to refine those numbers. So when we talk about traffic impacts and congestion, this is not a project that is going to be adding to that. This is a project that is designed to create and foster that live work component. Now, one of the things is with the other projects that we've built and residences that have moved into those projects, what we were aiming for was for local residents within this area, i.e. North County, et cetera. And what we've seen is that two years ago, Buellton was continuing the theme of a commuter path to either up north or down south. And what's been really interesting in looking at this project, and I'll briefly explain to you how we're going about this, is yes, this is a innovative project. Yes, this is a different project. And yes, this is a project that's looking at the life term of a structure. So when you see most of, I mean, I'll be honest with you. When I've gone through entitlements and we've entitled other buildings and uses before, I never really thought about the fact that those structures could last up to 80 or 100 years if they're built correctly. So if you imagine, and I know what's going to be happening in the next 15 years with a number of cars coming off the road because car purchases, driver's license, insurance applications, all the younger generations are just trending down, that we're going to see significant changes. So I understand this is innovative. I understand it's difficult to grasp. It took me a long time to grasp. So what are we doing to design this project? First, we spent a lot of time, and I think those who have seen pre-applications, you know, this is a pre-application concept where we wanted to come in and lay the cards down on the table and see what we had the feedback from the city council. Because there's a number, unlike a planning commission where a planning commission is purely looking at, does this meet policy? How can we make policy? City council has a broader perspective of the project's impact, not only for the project itself, but also for the adjacent residents and the city of Buellton. So I have to look at this project as being something that's pretty unique in changing Buellton. I agree, maybe just slightly, but you've got to start somewhere of actually having an employment base and actually being able to house workers who start out at working in one of these natural level businesses. And for me, this all started when there was the distillery company that was working down in here years ago when we first started looking at this project. And we went in there and I was chatting to these young guys that worked there and they were driving, one was driving in from Lompoc every day and one was driving in for Santa Maria. So that is kind of like the initial spur that created and provided direction for the original project that is currently fully approved, by the way, and is something that we will be processing and moving forwards on. Because the next step of our design is proving our concept. We've already established a plan to do that. Yes, that is reaching into Allen Hancock College and other colleges. And yes, that is working with some really interesting people that can provide some valuable insight because we have no interest in spending money that is not going to actually work. That doesn't serve anybody here. And I completely respect that this is a change. It is a change and I want to honor that. And I would just like to point out a couple of things. When we talk about building masses and we talk about building sizes, if you look out at the existing TerraVon project that is there right now, that building is 44 feet tall. We do not have a building at 44 feet in height. What we've actually done is gradient the building, the sizes closer to Rancho de Maria to be lower, further away from Rancho de Maria to be higher. And only down at the south end do we get to the point where we're at the 41 feet. I think it's 42 feet to be precise on the building that overlooks the Saniness Valley River. So with that being said, what I would like to do is let's go back to what I consider to be some of the basic key points that started out with agreements to Rancho de Maria. And some of the things that in reading the letters, the two letters that have been submitted in, really misinformation. And I'm making that pledge to everybody. When we, I want to have at least two more meetings with Rancho de Maria. I welcome the discussion because through the discussion, we can help understand input and maybe other residents will help understand the project as well. So if we go to the next slide, please. So this is, oh, sorry, I just went, sorry Scott, back. Sorry. So what we already agreed to is points one through five. This addressed the access through Rancho de Maria. Right now that we already have an easement. It is an unrestricted easement that was granted in exchange for the water main that services Rancho de Maria to run across our particular parcel and connect to the city's water system. In exchange for that, there was an easement granted. It's a very small easement, but it's basically from the fence line across the basketball court area to the public street to the other side. And what we agreed to do is to restrict that and provide a six-foot tall gate and that will remain locked. So when I say how does it remain locked? It would be electric gate with arms operators, fire department will have a knock box. If people need to get in, that's it. It's not something where someone who has the combination can just suddenly open the gate. Then we also agreed that at the southeast and towards, down towards the property where you come across the retention basin of ours, we will provide a FOB key gate. So Rancho de Maria would have control of the FOB key. They would be responsible for seeing who gets the FOB key. That FOB key will open the gate and they have to make sure that that gate closes. That will give them direct access to the bridge and across to industrial way. So lastly, we talked a little bit about the landscaping. I was out there the other day and walking up and down the fencing. And it is one of the things, there is existing hedging there. Some of it is on Rancho de Maria side, some of it is on our side. Some of the stuff, quite frankly, has just been overgrown. So that's really a communication aspect where we can provide better coverage. And at the right time, we will either transplant existing trees or bring in new trees. Not stuff in 24 gallon box, but a 48, a 48 inch, a four foot or a five foot box that we can work with adjacent HOA members of Rancho de Maria to place them accordingly. I think I've covered those items. These items down below were during our meeting that the aspects that were discussed as additional concerns. And I'm not going to go into those into any great detail. But obviously, all of these will be addressed in any future application process. The next step for us, once we gather this information, which is something that I'm really focused on, is proofing out the concept, getting the information, continuing work with our consultants. So what we can actually give everybody is a factual basis to understand what it is that we are proposing. A factual basis to understand how we can address the concerns. And at a conceptual basis where we are right now, I don't have all the information for you because we need to engage a number of consultants and we need to allow those consultants to do their work and produce valid information for us to get back to you. I think I've covered everything that I want to say. I would encourage, and I want to give the time to Rancho de Maria residents or anybody else that's here offering opinions. And I would welcome the opportunity just to offer a brief response to any issues where I feel I have some information to give. That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so let's bring that back to council for any questions of the developer.
If we can, sir, if we can hold off on council questions until after we've heard the public. And then as Scott said, when the council asks questions, they may not be answered tonight, but they're going to be the questions, the concerns that you have so that Irma, Scott, myself understand where you are. We understand where the public is and then we can move forward. If the applicant has their simple questions with simple answers, they may be answered tonight. But really what we're trying to do is get the concerns of the public, get the concerns of the four of you so that we know how to process it and the applicant hears it as well.
All right. Thank you for keeping me in line. I was in.
No, sir, you are just.
I was in process mode. Okay, so we will call up, we have some speaker requests here and we'll call you up and have you. Now let me reiterate, this is not whether you approve of this or disapprove of the project. This is going to be limited to your consideration, your concerns over the project. And did we get that fixed?
We did not, but I've got a timer right here. You'll hear when the two minutes.
Got you. Okay, this will be Joe Manser and he's representing Rancho de Maria Homeowners Association.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Joe Manser. I'm the president of the homeowners association. And I'm glad you got my email that was sent. I wasn't sure that I was here to talk about it. But if you've got that email and lists some of the concerns that we have, I'm just here to confirm and emphasize those concerns. But you know, I want to speak a little bit on what Gavin said. With all due respect, I don't know of any agreement that Rancho de Maria has with this project concerning the easement, the gates, any of this stuff is unbeknownst to me. And I'm the president of the association, so I just want to put that on the record. And like Irma said in her report, there are concerns we have about the increased burden on the water, on the wastewater, on law enforcement and many different issues. But what it comes down to is we, there's two issues. The easement is a big issue. In our records, that easement is for emergency access only. And so we need to get that straightened out. And the other big issue is what Jill was talking about was the fact that when those 116 new units go in next door, how are we going to mitigate them from using our private facilities, our parking lots, our parking spaces? I mean, our barbecue area, our tennis courts, our softball fields? That's, that's not for me. Yeah.
I don't think we should do this two-minute deal.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to agree with that, John. I've only got four speaker slots here, so I'm just going to go ahead.
They can, let them go.
If all of you have put one in, that would be a different story.
Oh, okay. Well, I kind of self-edited myself because I had three minutes.
The floor is yours, sir.
But yeah, some of the concerns we have have been voiced before at the planning commission meeting and in the report tonight. But like I said, the two biggest issues I have, we have, and the homeowners have expressed to us, is the access. We do not want a complete throughway down Shadow Mountain Drive all the way to the Campus 36 project. And also our own facilities need to be protected. We have enough problems now protecting from people from out of the city that come and use our playground and our tennis courts. And this to us seems like an increased burden upon these facilities. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Joe. And next up will be, is it Curtin Noygren? Is it Curtin Noygren? Curtin Noygren.
Hello, I'm a resident of a homeowner in Rancho de Maria. And I hadn't heard a lot about this project, so it's interesting for me to hear that today. I actually like most of what I hear. If. The developer does what they say they will do, then it seems like responsible growth for the city. I think the city does need to attract more jobs and have housing for younger people, so that that seems smart. The density doesn't bother me if it looks like how they say and if it's smart and well-designed, which it seems like it will be. But what I do want to emphasize, and this is for the council, I guess. Is that as we add more dense living areas. It just reiterates to me the need to have recreation opportunities. And to connect our neighborhoods and our city more than just this highway, which we can all hear out here. So I would, I would say that we have to have a river trail. If this development goes in. So these people have to be able to get on their e-bike, which is there and. Get to the park, get to River View Park, get to Albertson's without having to come up here, jump on highway. That's also going to increase the quality of life and the value within the Rancho de Maria neighborhood. Assuming that we have access to that river trail. That's my comments.
Thank you. And Terry Albright.
I am Terry Albright, Albright. Sorry. I do live in Rancho de Maria. I lived there for eight, going on nine years. When we first moved there, it was kind of a retirement area.
What's your address?
One eight one Victory Drive. It was kind of a retirement area. Over the last three or four years, it has turned into a place where a lot of younger people come with their families. A lot of them live on Shadow Mountain. You know, the thoughts of using it as an emergency entrance. My question would simply be, what is, what constitutes an emergency? You know, the way you spoke about Ed, uh you know, I actually think the beans that are coming venerate. I've known Ed since nineteen eighty-eight. I got nothing against him, good guy. But he is a developer. He is going to frost things, he's going to make things work to get this thing in. Doesn't mean it's going to do it for us, regardless of how he works. I love the guy. I love where I live a little bit more. I would like to know exactly what emergency entrance means. Oh, you know what? Industrial Way is clogged up. We gotta get our cement truck. That's an emergency. No, no, it's not really. I don't know what that is. I'd like to see something like that in writing. Is there penalties if things happen, people start going through? I don't know. I don't know the extent of any of these things. Those are my thoughts. And I'd like to have those things answered.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Can't quite read the writing, but it's Hudson. Hornick, okay. That's an R, okay.
Good afternoon, city council members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the presentation and to listen to me. I appreciate that St. George and his people coming, or excuse me, that St. George's people coming and giving a presentation today. Heard a lot of nice language about it, but um. In my opinion, this is not a unique situation. It's not innovative. This is essentially a dormitory that they're asking to put in, a dormitory that lacks the university. The units are rentals. This isn't going to provide long-term housing for people. This is going to be a moneymaker. And so I'm really just asking the city council to consider the staff recommendations in our report. Those recommendations are to consider the appropriateness of the project for the area and the community. On for mixed use, on for mixed use being intelligently implemented. I think that Bulton's general plan has identified the economic corridor as being avenue of flags. I see that as where mixed use is most appropriate. I think that trying to shoehorn a hundred and ten units with uh four hundred square foot apartments essentially. Into the tail end of industrial avenue is a, is a, is a, it's just going to be a problem. That's going to be a big problem. I think that traffic and pedestrian concerns are paramount to those problems. We also have, I know, um I I live in Rancho de Maria as well. We had a group of us got together and talked about this. And one of the concerns is during harvest time, there are a lot of trucks that line up along industrial avenue. If we have an emergency, even if we don't have an emergency, how are people going to get into and out of that area? And that's where a lot of concerns come from homeowners about entering into and out of the Rancho de Maria area. And even if, you know, it's not harvest time, it's going to take an extra ten minutes just to go through the exit. To get around to industrial avenue and the two or three stoplights therein, rather than taking Santa Rosa and coming through Rancho de Maria. I know that Bulton is bigger than just Rancho de Maria, so we have to consider this as a city. I think that it's, it's a laudable idea to try and have mixed use. I just don't think that that's right for this area. And I consider, I could just encourage city council to consider that and consider our own staff's recommendations. That area is zoned as industrial. I think we should leave it industrial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Even though you do not have a speaker slip, anyone else want to come up and speak about this? Okay. Okay.
My name's Jolene. I've actually been doing Rancho de Maria for like forty years since they, you know, been there. And we see this, um when we moved in, it was young families. We had our young children and then they grow up and it's older people for a while. And then all young families move back in and it kind of recycles, I think, like that. But it is a great community and and Mike and it, the project is really interesting and it. It seems really new and like it is an innovative thing. I am concerned about all these little, little units. And it's unfortunate that it doesn't provide any housing for our already really stressed community now. My son lives here and he can't find a place to live around here. And I think you mentioned that your child had moved out. And my son, I was going to have to do that too. So it's really hard. What's going on in Bulton already as far as housing? And I guess if this project goes through, my big concern is that access. I have heard that they're going to be using Shadow Mountain Drive to get down there to build their bridge. Is that a fact?
Not every day. We, at the H O, when we met, sorry. When we met with the members of the H O A at that time, people asked how many times would we need to come down? I gave an approximate three, I think, three to seven times during just to get initial equipment on, so we can construct the temporary bridge.
So you're coming three to seven times a day?
No, in total.
In all. So you're going to go through there, you'll get through there and you're going to be building in there once all that is done. You won't be going up and down that road every day because that was my concern, having these. Construction vehicles and the noise and the hardware tearing the road and the dust and the dirt, so. No, no, I know, but I'm just thinking that you, you want to. You know, just the fact that their construction vehicles went through our main drag there, you know, in our town. So so I'm thinking that you're worth the three to seven and it would be bad to have something in writing about that, like I think someone else mentioned. And say that's what's going to, that's what it's really going to be. Yeah, that would be great. So and and that perimeter there, having your building up that nice, if it's going to be in there, having all the trees up there. And having it kind of more of a block for people that live closer. I live more towards the front of the tracks. So views won't affect me as much as it will people that are living on that perimeter down there, so. So those are my concerns.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Dorwin and I live at one oh four Six Flag Circle in Rancho de Maria. This is a little tangential, but I was wondering if there was ever a consideration to. Especially since we, we are seeing kind of the activity of the city to develop solar. Facilities throughout the city. So I was kind of wondering about whether that seventeen acres. Could be utilized as a solar farm instead of. What's proposed. It seems to me that that's a direction that the city is moving in, in terms of their energy infrastructure. And I don't know if that's ever been discussed or considered, but. Uh I'm thinking about powering the, the, the treatment plant and other facilities. That might also need that. And would there be consideration by the city to look at that as an alternative project down there? I also noticed that part of the project, the property at the Willamsons property that the city purchased. There's a good portion of that land near the riverbed that is not going to be developed. And maybe the city with the understanding that we have to build a more sustainable. Energy infrastructure to look at. These particular parcels, which are very, you know, kind of challenged from a model development standpoint to consider that. So. That's my, my thoughts and actually had a conversation with some neighbors on the walk around our. Six Flag Circle in discussing that and we didn't know if you had considered that. So, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. So, sure, Morehouse, former resident of Rancho de Maria, but I am guilty, so. Hey, neighbor.
So my, my question is, for this development, you've got the live work and R and D mixed use kind of thing. So how do you? And these are all rentals, not sales, right? Are they all rentals?
Yes, oh, we, we're going to have an HOA at this point, yes.
So. The live work four hundred space with the roll-up garage door and a kitchenette and all that. How are you going to make sure that those stay exactly what you were proposing them for to be? R and D.
Yeah, yeah. Spaces are actually the, the live worker.
Is it a lease?
There, there's three thousand per fee, I guess, so with you, there's an HOA and then the further municipal approval. They have to get a kind of approval for whatever they're doing in their space, both the use and the actual construction. So that's going to be mandated and then, and then, as I said, Ed has a very vibrant. Not this developer that has a third-party operations team, so he will have full-time staff on there. And that, that will be part of the mission, I'm sure, of the project.
Okay, so how do you keep that for becoming great bachelor pets? I separate from my wife. I start up a R and D business and move into it. What if I don't have a business, but I start a business, it's R and D.
You're an R and D user. I, I, we can't qualify what your various statuses or your choices, but you would have a business.
But I.
Would not just be a living at that department.
So the flip side of that is, would that be a level of discrimination for affordable housing in an already contested environment? Because. Based on my type of job, you would be telling me I get rent here, not because of anything else. I can't discriminate you because you're a female, you might be a minority or lesbian or whatever. But you cannot discriminate because somebody is not an R and D. So that's, that's the question. We want to have better housing in the valley. We want to have affordable housing. We want to encourage growth and, and keeping R and D and industrial local. I work in aviation and I've committed for ten years and I love my job and there's no way I could afford to do it. So.
I can answer your question there. Not if that is in ten years, so that you have. Now, I will say, we have a couple odd spaces down in Santa Barbara. There's a woman that started a teddy bear store and she paid retail rates and. She has it open for students coming in. It does not sell anything. That type of environment, you can't get down in the five years, but it's a how of retail, I mean, a, an R and D. Business and a technical, technological business. We're not going to dictate how quickly they're creating products or that, but they will have to be permitted. Their use will be permitted. It'll be mandated for their uses, so it doesn't turn into a bachelor pad. It couldn't turn it into a residential apartment where they had a bunch of guys come over hanging out.
So the other, other, was it, are you going to have hours, certain hours in manufacturing door? City has those already. Okay. What are, what are manufacturing hours?
The object of tonight's meeting is to ask the questions. We, we will ensure that before the process is finished, everyone has the answers to them.
My name is Les Rose. I reside at forty-seven Bundy Circle in Rancho de Maria. I wasn't really expecting to speak or ask questions. I heard the presentation at the clubhouse, whatever it was, a month ago. One thing did jump out at me at the end of that presentation. Was when the gentleman said. I forgot the guy's, is it Dave or whoever's in charge of this project? No, not Gavin, but. What Gavin said was, Ed has this approved, this is going to happen. This is after a lot of resistance and a lot of hard questions that were directed. You almost shut everybody down by saying, Ed has this approved. It's going to be developed. It's going to happen. Everybody went silent. And I'm thinking, is this project approved? Is this going to happen? Is just, is this just an exercise? So I wonder about that and I'm really concerned about that.
No, this is not approved. The previous project has been approved by the council. If this does not go through, they still have approval on the previous one and that can be developed, just to clarify that. This is a modification of the original project.
Thank you for clarifying that. And in the original project, there was far less residential. Involved.
Correct.
And so putting two and two together with listening to my neighbor's comments, especially about their concern with. This is no place to add density. It is a little bit more appropriate for an industrial area, but of course it does depend on what kind of industry. Are we going to have fumes? Are we going to have smoke? Are we going to have, you know, et cetera, et cetera? What kind of um industry it's going to be? The other thing that concerns me and my neighbors about this density. And what the other gentleman just, just mentioned about. You have no control over who rents there. By the time you advertise, and correct me if I'm wrong, unless you do have control over who rents there. By the time you advertise these apartments, they could be completely taken up by desperate people that already live here. That have children here that want to go to school, that want an apartment, that don't want to work in this campus. And so. It could just end up being. An industry, an opportunity for industry, but more, moreover. Density apartments, because you have no control over who rents it. And you could take those micro apartments and before you know it, you could have four kids. Living in those micro apartments, just the way they live in Isle of Vista and New York. So you have absolutely no control over the density. And with people desperate for housing. That could be a serious concern. The lady mentioned about. Could there be something better done with that land, mentioning about solar? You already put solar in this parking lot and everything here is run by solar. What a brilliant idea. Solar. What about a recreation area for the residents that already live here? That are desperate for things to do in this community. I've been living here for seventeen years. There's nothing to do here. We love our work, we love our community, we love our neighbors. We love our Rancho de Maria golf course and park, but let's face it, they didn't put up a bowling alley, there's nothing to do here. Wouldn't we be better served with a beautiful park? A recreation area? Culture? A museum? A performing arts center? Something to serve the community as opposed to a vehicle for a developer to make a lot of money? And that's my big concern, it's the density and the appropriateness of density right in this area, thank you so much.
Okay. So I, I will bring that back to council for our questions and concerns. For dollar.
The part that's already permitted, do they have emergency access from Rancho de Maria?
That, there was emergency access, but it was not to be used as a thoroughfare. Okay.
The easement aspect and like the viability of that needs to look at this question and how it was determined as an emergency access point.
Go ahead.
So in what way, what we did is I can give you a title policy with all legal description on the easement and power structure. And that was presented to the previous representatives of Rancho de Maria, who we came under when we did the original entitlements. And I'm happy to share that information. It's actually, it's actually an easement over your property or at, or this particular parcel's benefit. It is a recorded easement, yes, it's been in place since the eighties when your original project was built. So I'm, I'm happy to issue that it's been out through First American Title and I can send that out, I'll email it, if I get your email address, I'll send it to you directly. So what we did is with the representatives originally at Rancho de Maria, we set up a system in place where the, where we agreed to limit that access for emergency use only. My understanding of emergency use is anything where there is a call for nine one one. That is it. I think that's the city's understanding as well. So if there's fire and there's a fact, if there's a fire in Rancho de Maria, it will provide benefit for secondary access to get out to industrial way. In regards to your comments, sir, I don't recall making any statement at regards to this particular application. I did make a statement in regards to the original project as Vice Mayor King represented. So I apologize if there's any misunderstanding there, that's my clear record, I agree. And in regards to the solar farms, this, every one of these roofs will have solar panels on it. So that by itself will make this solar farm. And this is just an application and obviously we need to review all comments and see what we can do to enhance and improve the project. And for years and years and years, I've sat in all the audiences where people have their own agenda, make disparaging remarks about developers. Yet they all live in homes which were built by developers. And I would say I've built, they're built in this community and I'm very proud of what I've done in this community because it's provided housing for a number of people that were able to afford it and have benefited from it at this time. And to associate me as a greedy developer is something that I take a little bit of offense to. But I'm all here to listen, learn and improve the project for the betterment of not just residents of Rancho.
That's, that's going to be a discussion with him. Okay, so we'll, we'll, and I'll start off with John and I'm sure John has some questions of the developer or concerns.
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to, I'm glad everybody showed up and I, and I didn't want to limit anybody's time because I know how passionate everybody is about it. I lived in Rancho de Maria. I was in the third, in the third phase, somebody's got in early. And, but originally when Rancho de Maria went in, it was a planned unit development and it was going to be leased land. And it'd be, and it, it became the unleased land because the community services wouldn't give them water or sewer if it was leased land. So that's why the Rancho de Maria is owned now, so everyone in, in Rancho de Maria owns their lots. And originally it was going to be like Mission Hills, which would have been a hundred year lease or something like that. And it would have been like Tanglewood and, and Santa Maria and so, in appreciation of Rancho de Maria, I think it's great for the community and I know every, every one of you that is there, I live there, I have many friends who live there. And, and anyway, I wanted to thank you for coming and it's important that you, that you listens, everything. On my, on the access, I have an, I have a problem, like no problem, but I'd like to know the people are going to want to walk in that direction. So either we're going to have to have a path for them to walk around the golf course and, or along the creek or something. And the other thing is, I know a lot of people in Rancho de Maria want to have access to industrial way. And there may be things in here that people would like access to businesses and there are people in, in Rancho de Maria that may get a job over here working with one of these companies. So I think it should be cohesive and, and the other thing is, the city is, is the biggest neighbor, we have the golf course. So we, you know, we have a lot to protect between us. I do think there should be a river trail, I like, you know, I've, we've talked about it, the county's talked about it. We own the park that goes all the way to the halfway. We own, and the golf course is the other access, so the, the city is the biggest owner of property that would be on a bike trail. So I think that would be most, you know, one of the most important things to establish is a, a way to get around it. And there's going to be something there, everybody knows, I was looking at the picture here, there's huge buildings that are bigger than what's proposed across the, the river here. So anyway, I just want everybody in Rancho de Maria to get, you know, to work with, I think you, you can work with the developer, you'd have to, and there's things that if you don't like, want to answer. And we're still working on this, again, this is, this is just concept, no one's, you know, it's not in concrete, it's not inked, they're here to talk to you about it and anyway, I think it's an open book and we all still need to talk about it, so thank you. I'll think of some other questions and I had some written down. I just wanted, thank you.
I want to echo Councilmember Sanchez's thanks for you all to be here, whether you agree with it or oppose it or whatever, the fact that you're here and present and communicating about it is really important. We oftentimes have meetings literally by ourselves and it's sometimes like really big stuff that impacts a lot of Buellton and literally no one shows up, it's crickets. So to have people come and explain how they're feeling about stuff really helps us as a council person because I have my own opinions of what I think are good and what I think are, you know, not good things for Buellton, but I don't have everyone else's perspective and I can't have that perspective, I don't hear from people. So I really appreciate you being here and giving us your perspective so that we can use that to help guide our decision making and possibly change our mind or impact our decisions. So with that being said, kind of addressing the project a little bit, I would like to know if the open spaces that you have envisioned in some of the multi-use spaces, if they're going to be open and available for the city as a whole? Like if you have community spaces and event spaces, like I think of it as like the Sainz High School, we have one theater and that theater gets a lot of use. And then it's being used for all different kinds of meetings and stuff that could use a community space that doesn't necessarily need a theater, but there's nowhere else to go. So if it was something that the community could also participate in the usage of or rent community meeting spaces, those types of things, Buellton doesn't have that. So it would be really awesome if the community had some sort of access to renting, even if it's, you know, they pay to rent those spaces, that would be really great for the community as a whole and not just Buellton, but I'm thinking like, you know, the schools and performances and holiday shows, things that could potentially use that space, I don't know in terms of traffic and flow, you know, how big an event you could have, but just meeting space and the availability for the city as a whole to utilize some of those shared spaces would be awesome. I think it's a little short sighted to have that many two bedroom apartments with no playground. So coming from a, you know, a younger parent with kids, there's, there are two bedrooms. You're most likely going to have young families, especially with the housing shortage. There's a lot of young families that are entrepreneurs that are trying to start businesses, this is perfect for them. And to have them like right next to Rancho de Maria where they see all kinds of cool play stuff for kids and then to not have something, I think it's short sighted. They should have something, even if it's just a small space, I think it, it would behoove you to have that. I used to live in Rancho de Maria, I loved my house in Rancho de Maria, I lived on Shadow Mountain Drive. And as a home on the main drive, my kids would play and run in the street and they're oblivious. So it is important to me that that stays strictly emergency only because kids play, they're not going to watch and any added, you know, congestion on that street, that street in particular is, is dangerous to the community there. So I think that's very important to keep that emergency use. And the perimeter and the, the planting that you have there, I think is going to be really important because it will buffer the effect of the view. And I think that some really nice trees and things that make it pleasant to look at is going to be really important. So I, I'd like a lot of time to be spent on how to make that pretty to look at from one of those homes, because right now they have a beautiful view and it would suck to be a homeowner and suddenly have a view that is not so nice to look at. And then I also agree with the walking trail, I think it is extremely important for access and kind of jumping on what Mr. Sanchez said, I think that the two communities as much as possible with maintaining their separateness and, you know, user amenities separate, also have some sort of symbiotic relationship with the walking trails so that they both have access and it's not just this is ours and this is yours, but the walking trails should be part of a bigger overall walkable Buellton. I think that's a huge thing our community needs and this is a perfect venue for it, so that's.
Well, might as well come back up with a microphone because I'm going to ask questions. Either one of you. Okay, so how many, how many garages do you have associated with this project? You said you had three hundred parking spaces, but you said you also had garages. And I'm going to make the assumption that those parking spaces that you refer to, some of those are the garages.
Yes, you're correct, and so forty eight of the covered spaces and condos do have secure cars.
Okay, so there, there are garage intended for a car to be parked in. Okay, can you, maybe our counselor can tell us this, thank you very much. The council might be able to chime in on this, can you legally tell someone that they cannot store things in that garage?
You can legally, as per, per season, or dictate that they can fit a car into their space, if they have other things stored there that, you know, Christmas ornaments, that type of thing, but it can be a primary parking space and they can't see the violation for it.
So if you have a car associated with one of these apartments, you have to park it in the garage, otherwise you can be fined in the association.
Yes.
Okay. The the emergency access, is that a pole gate or is that like a chain link fence? It's electric gate, but is it a pole gate?
Gate operators.
What, what I'm saying is, is it a chain link fence barrier? Or is it a pole gate?
At, at the meeting we had on May twelfth, we showed a picture which is a metal gate with wood cladding on it. And it had, on the back of it is two electric gate operators with a knox box on the Rancho de Maria side for emergency access.
I, I guess what my question is, could I walk through it?
No.
So it's some kind of a barrier?
It is.
Okay, okay, that clarifies that. I, I guess one of my main questions is here is, can you legally preclude anyone from renting one of these spaces if they don't work on site?
Or businesses on industrial way. After ninety days, it then went out the incremental circles through Buellton as to who who ran those units. I certainly envision something like that with regards to the residential roads. When we, there is a live work component to this. And in our, in our application, we can specifically define how that is set up and how that is leased or even sold, I don't know. But at this point in time, I think it's, those are detailed questions that we need more information, it's more time than just a conceptual. Why do you not get a answer?
I, I would say this legally, you can certainly require that the three thousand square foot or whatever live work units, you have to work in the unit that you're living in. With respect to the micro studios and the one bedrooms, we would need to see their legal counsel's analysis of how they propose to regulate that and then analyze what they provide to us before we can really give you a good answer on that. We're not going to go down the rabbit hole ourselves on what might be possible, but we'll take what they give us and, and let you know whether we think it's binding or not.
Got you.
Yes, sir.
So if you, let me ask you another question. Doug tells in the one I asked previously, if you cannot get through the Rancho de Maria and you don't have a car, do you have to go to Albertson's, do you have to either like John said, walk around the golf course or go up industrial to the two forty six to walk over to the supermarket?
Technically in this day and age, yes, in the future and very near future, probably not. But all of that will be established and studied by the traffic study that will be undertaken with the metrics that traffic engineers have. And those metrics will be based on current day traffic patterns and current day shopping facilities, et cetera.
Yeah, and we're okay with this being a condition of approval, we intend to have zip cars on site that can be rented by the hour and or for people that say that maybe doesn't, don't have a, a driver's license, that we have the rental license. They are, they're not just icing, they're, they're really functional, they are used all over Santa Barbara, I'm surprised.
Right. Let me look here. Okay, I think that's all I have and I, and I would also like to tell everyone, I appreciate you coming in here and like Lisa said, that we have had a lot of meetings that nobody shows up, you know, this precedent, precedent to this, none of you were in here. And if you have a concern or consideration, we need input from you. So we need you to come in here if you have concerns about things and not just talk about it in the neighborhood because we are your city council and we make policy decisions about what goes on. And if we don't hear anything from you guys, well, it's just us five up here and then we make that policy decision. So yes, I appreciate you all taking the time to come in here and voice your concerns about this project and any other project going forward in the city. So having that in mind, if we have no other speakers, I am quickly. Well, that is a good point and I forgot to write that down and so if you could address that. Correct. Because this is a big concern for me, parking, and if anybody in this room has ever listened to one of our Zoom meetings, I'm always talking about parking and there's a couple of projects that have gone in that I wasn't real happy about because of the parking. And we're going to revisit that and that is a very valid question that you ask, is that you also have a commercial component with this. If all those are taken, all those spaces are taken up by residents, where's your commercial going to? And I have one more question for you, go ahead and answer that one.
Okay, and it's very valid concern and I also have to say from a practical perspective, we've been able to rent the units and whether it's the R and D units or their usable units for, for multifamily, if there's an adequate parking. So we took the most conservative route possible, we parked the multifamily per code intentionally all by itself. And then we took the R and D and parked it all by itself at, at commercial breakdown rates. And we, we have provided that to staff as far as actual breakdown, but we intended. but we intended that there were two totally separate animals. Now, that being said, there is more of a drive in communities to look at less parking, less hard skate. How do we look at that? We know that dialogue might come up, but we took the most conservative route, and so we made sure that everything is parked independently. And so the R and D spaces, as they said earlier, the little workspaces for three thousand feet have five parking spaces, it's pretty good. And all of those would be, uh, would be assigned for use.
Got you. Well, the question while you're up there, you said that these roads that are going through here, what is the total overall width of those roads?
Everything that is adjacent to a building is twenty-six foot wide so that, and that's for emergency response, because they want to be able to get their ladder up easily to the second floor.
Right.
Plus sidewalks.
Plus sidewalks.
The actual vehicle thoroughfare is twenty-six feet.
Twenty-six minus, let's say sixteen, ten, eleven feet. So those are adjacent to the parking spaces, correct? Parking spaces are adjacent to this road. So if you take, say, twelve feet for a car, now you have fourteen feet, a fourteen-foot road, effectively. So what I'm asking is, how wide is the?
Twenty-seven, the twenty-seven, I mean, see, the twenty-six is purely just the driveway.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to clarify. That is what I want to clarify.
Yeah, the car department, it's very clear.
Okay, I'm sure there's going to be further discussions about parking. And. Go ahead. What was the question again? Sorry, I didn't hear it.
Is the yellow things that are on our yellow box? So I'm, and I don't know who's putting it out there, but thank you. Whoever did that. But how else can, where can we go to know when all these meetings, when you guys are sitting here by yourselves?
Is it on the city website?
Yes, on the city website, and they're posted.
The city council meets typically the second and fourth Thursdays of the month, but obviously you won't know when a meeting to discuss this will happen. Before a meeting to discuss this project, before a public hearing to discuss this will happen, notices will be sent out by the city to all properties within three hundred feet. So the homeowners association will certainly get notice of that and can, can put that out to you. If you live outside of that radius and you're really interested, check the city council's website, check the agendas, they come out every other week roughly. They come out the Friday before the city council meeting. The city council meeting is on a Thursday, so the Friday before is posted on the website. If you happen to walk out here, there's a board right on the outside of the library that hosts the agendas. There's one right outside the door to City Hall, or you can give City Hall a call and we'll tell you. But it, it, it does take some effort on the part of residents to know when something's happening, but notices put out when public hearings take place. And so if your homeowners association gets the notice and they put it out to the residents, then everyone should know.
Well, taken. Somehow I ended up on the email list of the Galita City Council. I never lived in Galita, I worked in Galita, but I was wondering if there was a way of getting an email distribution list. So, you know, we never think of, we work hard, we never think about checking a website for something. What's the say, do we even know what the second Tuesday is? You know, if there's a way of a email distribution list, that would be a great way, I would, you would get more people.
At this point, we don't have that. And to be honest with you, the best we could do would be to send out an email to everyone on the list every time there's an agenda put out, which is not going to do you the service of telling you that there's something you might be interested on it. However, we are looking at implementing a, a, a new function here at City Hall with an internet presence that would potentially allow you to sign up for notifications for given projects. It's not yet, but probably by the third quarter of the year, we should have that up and running.
That's the way to go.
And you can also, there.
It's like a regional thing, too.
Yeah, it is. And there's also, it's posted at Albertson's? No, not anymore.
Here in the library.
Oh, here in the library, okay. So there's an agenda item, does it take you a second? Drive in, take a look at it, something concerns you, come in here and sit in the seats, because like Lisa said, it's like we're talking to the air.
This new social media platform will be good.
We're working on that. It'll be up in a couple of months, hopefully. In the meantime, feel free to contact our city clerk. She has some suggestions also that might be helpful.
Okay, once again, and I appreciate all of you coming in here, okay? And if there's nothing else, I'm going to close this meeting to a closed session. And before we do that, we're going to have the city manager's report.
Thank you. If I could just say, I would say, as long as you want to, and continue to ask additional questions, we will be reaching out to the representatives, the actual way that we are communicating to let you know where we're at in the next meeting at your facility of your meeting.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor King. Members of the city council, very briefly tonight, one item on the city manager's report. As the city council is aware, you requested and made an item as a city council priority, the review of landscaping along Riverview Drive, both along the south side where the trees were removed and along the north side of two forty-six where the landscaping is kind of in, in decline. The Public Works Department staff has been looking at that and getting some quotes as to what it would cost to bring that back up to a state of repair. Given the initial numbers we've received, we're going to continue looking to see what other options are out there. We will return to the city council with some options and possible recommendations, but that won't be until probably sometime in July. But rest assured, we are working on that, and we will bring that to you as soon as we have some information for you. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
And I'll turn over to our city attorney.
All right, now we're going to move into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. One item of potential initiation of litigation. It looks like the room is being cleared, but why don't we sit for a minute? We'll close the window.
Let's take, uh, take a few minutes here.